Welcome to this evening's meeting of the Muskogee City Council for February 22nd, 2021. Before we begin tonight's meeting, I have a special presentation to make on tonight. I'm going to ask that Mr. Gary Garvin come forward.
You all got quiet like we're in the principal's office.
We don't want to hear what you gotta say.
No, we don't want to talk about this tonight, but we have to. After 36 years of being with Muskogee City Government, I am so sad that Gary Garvin is retiring. I'm happy for him because he deserves it. But I'm sad and I have mixed emotions because of the job that you've done, Gary, from the time I've been on the council. And I didn't appreciate it all the more until I became mayor. Gary, in his capacity as the Assistant City Manager, particularly in the area of economic development, has worked very hard for the city to be certain that we can get to yes. There probably have been many opportunities where there were roadblocks or barriers to what we needed to be able to do. But Gary will find a way to get us there. He has a good spirit because when you're in his level of position with city government, you get a lot of unnecessary criticism. I'm learning, as mayor, that there are a lot of armchair quarterbacks all over the city who think we could do it better. And Gary, despite numerous types of criticisms, has always kept an upbeat spirit. Now, that doesn't mean he probably doesn't go into office and want to chop the desk in half. But he never demonstrates that publicly. He's always been a great person. We've had the opportunity to sit at several events together. And Gary is not just a good person at work, he's even a better person after work. Lots of fun to be with. And we're gonna miss you. We're gonna miss you, Gary. I've heard rumors that your house is already packed up on four wheels and that as soon as you get the right sign, you're gonna drive off into the sunset. But let me say, as the mayor of the city of Muskogee, I can have some influence if you want to come back. Just make a text or make a call and we'll start talking to people and try to make something happen. Because we're gonna be sad to see you go. And ladies and gentlemen, let me tell you, this is a fine man, a great person, a wonderful human being. And because of all of your service to the city of Muskogee, it's my honor as the mayor of the city to give you a key to the city.
I believe Mr. Miller may have some remarks. And then, if you'd like to say anything, we'll let you do that at this time.
Thank you, Mayor. And it's hard to top what the mayor might have to say. But Gary, there's not enough that I can say about you and what you've done for the city and what you've done for me since I've been here at the city. But today is about you. And here's a few things I know and that I want to make sure everybody knows. Is that Gary is hardworking, he's conscientious, and he's kind. He puts the city of Muskogee first before he puts his own will or what's even good for, easy for him. If it's good for the city and hard for Gary, Gary's gonna do the hard thing. And that's what you want out of a public servant. And the mayor alluded to the fact that over time, we work for the city and you serve on the council. You do some things that some people like and some things that don't. Gary has been a leader that has done the right thing for Muskogee for 36 years. One thing that I've learned is that if I'm in a meeting and we're trying to solve a problem, I want to wait for Gary to talk. And he's gonna listen. And at the end, he's gonna give an answer to what it's gonna be. And nine times out of 10, I'll say, yeah, that's what we should do. Better than the idea I might have had. Because he listens, he understands how things work, and he can come up with solutions. And that is gonna be missed. So Gary's absolutely fantastic Assistant City Manager. And he's even better as a person, as a father, and as a grandfather. And as of Friday, you'll add another title and that'll be retired.
Yes.
So I want to say thank you, and on behalf of the city, thank you for your service, Gary.
Thank you. You can take this with you. Okay. Well, I'm kinda speaking to us, but I have been with the city for 36 years. Have enjoyed every minute of it. Well, maybe not every minute. But I have had the privilege to work with so many great individuals here at the city. So many that I can't name them all. Some of them I see every day, work with every day. I'll miss you more than you know. But I will be thinking about you when I'm on that lake fishing or on top of that mountain chasing tail or sitting on that beach having a cold one. With that being said, though, there is only one other person who's put up with me longer than the city, which is my wife, Brene. Put up with me for almost 40 years now. Hopefully she'll put up with me for another 40 years. Also, my daughter Lacey's here and my granddaughter Abigail. Love you guys. Anyway, moving forward, I do want to wish the city, the mayor, the council, especially you, Mike, thank you very much, all the best moving forward. I do believe that the city has some of the best employees. And I think they'll continue to guide the city down the right path moving forward. Thanks for 36 years. We will now have the invocation by Deputy Mayor Derek Reed, followed by the flag salute. Let us stand.
Shall we pray? Dear Lord, we come thanking you and praising you for the gift of another day. Just thank you for life and just thank you for the joys of this day and the things and the blessings that you give us each and every day. Just ask that you would just look upon our community as we are overcoming disasters, as we are overcoming COVID. Just ask that you would just be with us, hold us, keep us in your care and in your love. Just ask that you would just bless us as councilmen on tonight as we face decisions and obligations tonight that we will do the things that are pleasing in your sight and in your will. These are many other blessings we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Attention, salute, pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Ivory Van.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Here.
Alex Reynolds.
Here.
Stephanie Morgan.
Here.
Tracy McGee.
Here.
Tracy Hous.
Here.
I'd like to entertain a motion to excuse Councilor Van at this time.
So moved.
Second.
Properly moved in second that we excuse Councilor Van. Roll call.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes. We will now consider the approval of the City Council Regular Session Minutes for February 8, 2021. Do we have any questions concerning the minutes or a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
Second.
Properly moved in second and a further discussion. Roll call.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes. We will now consider item number one.
Consider approval of Resolution Number 2848, declaring a local emergency under the Oklahoma Emergency Management Act of 2003 for the city of Muskogee, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Miller.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of council. We are requesting a declaration to let us deal with the storm. Even though we're after the storm, we've had federal and state declarations. And we do want to ask for a local declaration as well. The storm really has taxed your staff to the limit. I want to update you on the current situation as it relates to the request for the declaration of emergency. Kind of walk you through before, kind of during and after the storm and what happened here. Before the storm, we had a lot of preparations. We had the police going out into the community, dealing with people experiencing homelessness and trying to make sure they had a place to go that was safe and warm, working with Emergency Management, Gospel Risky Mission, and other partners within town. Police and others in the city went above and beyond to make sure that those who were vulnerable were looked out after as best we could. Police and Fire were working on their emergency protocols, how to respond during a high snowfall event, different routes that they might take. Another good community partner, James Hodge Ford, lent us four-wheel-drive vehicles for our police department to respond. And our fleet management then went to work to make sure that those were outfitted with emergency lights so that people would understand that they were getting pulled over by the police. And the fleet also worked on other, our snow removal equipment and our ice spreading or brine spreading machines. Public Works got their staff ready. They reviewed the plans for the snow and ice removal routes that we already have in place. They started prepping the streets even before the storm began. And then, once the storm hit, it was really all hands on deck. For nearly 10 days straight, we had street crews running 24 hours a day, 12-hour shifts. They were trying to keep the main roads clear for police and fire and EMS. We had firefighters that responded to house fires four days in a row in sub-freezing temperatures. Police officers helped rescue citizens from snowbanks and marked vehicles that they found in ditches after they were cleared so that people would know that that vehicle was safe. When it got really cold and then as it warmed up again, city water lines started to break. And then we have that freeze-thaw cycle that's very dangerous on city infrastructure. So water distribution crews have worked through two straight weekends, addressing major line breaks and trying to keep our citizens in water. I'm not talking about today, you know, when it was 60 degrees, though they were out there today and probably still are until it gets dark. I'm talking about days when the high was in single digits. They were in frozen temperatures, dealing with very cold running water, trying to fix those leaks. So we always prioritize the large breaks and the breaks that keep customers out of service. And then we prioritize the breaks that cause threat to public safety. And just keep in mind, this is happening all over the country. And unfortunately, we're not immune to those laws of physics and mother nature. We do have contractors that work with us, though, trying to keep us helping address those breaks caused by this emergency. We've also had reports from some of our rural water district customers about not having water out in the county. So we've gone extra mile to make sure that we're getting water to those rural water districts. Our meters show that our rural water district customers have received far more water from us this week than their average usage. So this means we're getting the rural water districts tremendous amounts of water, but their systems are struggling to keep up with leaks and high water usage and high demand on their end. We are happy to help them and we continue to do so. And we have done that today. And we'll continue to do so and partner with them. We don't want anyone to be without water. So after the storm, you know, we kind of move into damage control. And so our street crews are gonna transition from snow and ice removal to emergency pothole repair and patching. Again, that freeze-thaw cycle is very damaging to streets, not to mention the snow removal equipment and some of the chemicals can be damaging to the pavement. So that being said, we will be working to identify and fixing any potentially nasty potholes that develop because of this. And we want people to use our app to report those. If we know that there's gonna be damage to the pavement that wasn't there two weeks ago and we want to address those as quickly as possible, please use the City of Muskogee app on your phone or on the website to try and report potholes. Our city property also not immune to freezing temperatures. We have the Civic Center, Animal Shelter, and a concession stand out of Hat Box that all suffered water damage due to broken pipes. And so we've already started working with our insurance company, our facilities crews, to try and work on those repairs and get those back up and running. I'd be remiss if I didn't talk about our water meter technicians. They worked all weekend helping people who had pipes break in their house. Dozens and dozens of people who had pipes burst and needed an emergency water shut-off. And you can imagine what kind of crisis that is when your home is flooding with water coming out of the pipe. It's such a relief to see Marvin and Kenneth when they show up in their all-weather coveralls. They can look like angels if you got water pouring out of your house. And they've worked nonstop to try and make that happen. Finally, I want to give some extra attention to our sanitation crews. Many of them worked 12-hour shifts early last week when we weren't able to run our sanitation routes. They were working with the street crews to clear the snow and ice. So on Wednesday, they were able to start running their sanitation routes. And so here's what they did. After working those 12-hour shifts through the weekend before, in Monday and Tuesday, Wednesday through Saturday, they picked up five days of trash in four days. They did that in the middle of the worst snowstorm in years. They did that while integrating some brand-new technology with our new trucks. And they did that, again, after working those 12-hour shifts earlier in the week. And they're right back at it today. And so council members, you sometimes see these men and women when we honor them as Employees of the Month. This is the kind of behavior is why. This is the kind of people you have working for you that when times are the hardest, they're the ones out trying to make it better for our community. So I know our crews aren't perfect, but I also know that they've worked so, so hard to keep our city safe since I started coding our city on February 9th. So I am very proud of them. And what I'm asking tonight is for you to consider an emergency declaration that's gonna allow us to compartmentalize the costs associated with this devastating storm. Use our stabilization fund, which is specifically set aside to deal with emergencies like this. And so, that being said, we do request an emergency declaration and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Miller or a motion to approve the emergency?
Move for approval. And I'd just like to add a, you know, we can't, you know, show staff enough that we're appreciated for all their time and effort that they've put in this last two weeks and making sure everything kept running as needed. So we just thank you guys enough, you know, thank you guys, and we appreciate you.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
It's properly moved in second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
I had a question, Mr. Mayor. On the emergency, are we putting a dollar amount on that, Mr. Miller?
I'm not sure I understand your question. I want to make sure.
Is there gonna be a dollar amount of how much you're asking for on this emergency? You said your staffs are gonna go back and assess what the damages are.
We don't know at this time what they'll be with the water lines. I anticipate it'll be over $100,000, less than $1 million. That's what I would anticipate, just as a ballpark right off the top of my head. Our stabilization fund has more than $6 million in it.
Thank you.
And we do anticipate also, by the way, thank you for asking. This jogged my memory, something I didn't say. It helps when we're applying. All these costs may be reimbursable through FEMA, they may not. But this declaration helps us in that way that we may be able to be reimbursed. Again, it is a federal and state-declared disaster.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Miller? Roll call.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds. Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes. Item passes. Item number two.
Receive report on the COVID-19 vaccination rollout, including the status of booster inoculations and retail distribution for city of Muskogee, and take other necessary action.
Deputy Mayor Reed.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council, for giving me this opportunity. This is one of those times as a councilman that I have to use this position to be the voice of the voiceless. I've received many calls over the last couple of months. People who are trying to get vaccines, don't know where to get the vaccines from, at, who's offering the vaccines. And so that's what this agenda item was birthed from, is to try to make awareness. And also, we wanted to sound the alarm that we felt that Muskogee was not getting the proper amount of doses. But even since this agenda item has started, a lot of pieces have fallen in place. You've heard me over the last couple of weeks discuss getting community organizations involved. Involved in the process of making sure that those seniors who don't have access to the internet would have a place where they can call in and somebody can help them get signed up and going out to churches and opening up church doors to have congregants to come and get their vaccines. And since I drafted this agenda item, I would first of all like to give special thanks to our State Representative Avery Fricks, who has opened up many doors for us to make this a reality. I've reached out and tonight you will hear from the State Health Department, from one of our local pharmacists is represented tonight. Giving special thanks to Vice President Tracy Cole, who helped me make some of these contacts. And then I also have the President of the organization, President Roger Cudler, and his Health Secretary is here with us on this afternoon. We will go through this as quickly as possible. But once again, we must, you know, in talking about the vaccine, taking time out to say, rest in peace to all those who didn't have this chance and this opportunity. I would be remiss if I didn't take this opportunity also to admit that I've been blessed to have received the vaccine. With my underlying health conditions, I took the vaccine and the side effects were nothing compared to the fright of catching COVID. I know some people in the room have caught COVID and they talked about the devastation of having it. And then unfortunately, some didn't make it with COVID. And so we thank God that He has opened doors for us to receive vaccines here in the United States and all across the world. On my radio show each Sunday, I always close my radio show by saying, there's a bright side somewhere. Don't you stop, don't give up until you find it. And so we are at a point now where it's devastating as COVID has been over the last year, we have a bright side and it's through our vaccines. So with that, I want to encourage everyone that's listening and tuned in. If you have the opportunity, when your time comes, make sure that you get the vaccine. But today, Mayor, we wanted to start a conversation of how we can implement getting the community involved and making sure that there are soldiers on the ground to get the seniors to the places where they can get the vaccine. One of the calls I received was from a lady at one of the adult senior living centers. And she said she didn't understand why there's a building full of seniors and a nurse couldn't come there to their facility and give them the vaccinations. That's the kind of discussion that I hope to have on tonight. Just dealing with my own family members, I've had a family member who has cancer, had to drive to Tulsa. That's kind of far-reaching to ask senior citizens to drive out of town. But once again, like I said, I would like to give special thanks to Avery Fricks because the doors are now open. So with that being said, I would first like to yield some time to Ms. Tina Johnson from the State Health Department, and I believe she's online, if the IT department can get her at this time. Ms. Tina, if you can unmute your phone, we can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you.
All right, great. Yes, and I am Tina Johnson. I am in my everyday position with the Health Department. I'm Assistant Deputy Commissioner for Family Health Services, which is a part of Community Health Service. Currently, I am the Interim Regional Director for District 7, in which Muskogee County is a part of that district. I actually started this role technically Monday of last week. And as you can imagine, the snowstorms and all of that has really caused some major issues for all of us and especially for us trying to get vaccine out to our citizens. So I feel like really today is my first really official day in which I am able to get together and work with everyone and get some successes going. I did want to thank Deputy Mayor Reed, Mayor Coleman, and all the Muskogee councilors. Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to come today. And hopefully I can provide you with some information and guidance and answer questions or whatever we need to do. But I did want to give you a little bit of an update of what I am aware of right now that has occurred. As I mentioned, last week, we had to cancel several clinics because of the weather. And the Muskogee County Health Department staff worked Saturday and Sunday and gave over 850 immunizations, trying to make up those clinics that had to be canceled. A large percentage of those were second-dose immunizations, which means that person's already received the first dose and we're trying to get those second doses accomplished. We are very fortunate in that we have several partners in Muskogee County that we've been able to work with. And as we get more vaccine allotted to us and more vaccine coming into the state of Oklahoma, I anticipate those partners will grow even more. And I'm not going to go over all the numbers of those partners, but some of them are AVV Health Center in Muskogee West, Cornerstone Specialty Hospital, Ernie's Pharmacy and Wellness Center, Fort Gibson Medical Clinic, the NEO Health Muskogee, Value Med Pharmacy, Walgreens Pharmacy, and then another Walgreens Pharmacy, Walmart Supercenter, Warner Health and Wellness, and St. Francis Muskogee Memorial Hospital East, and then EH. So those have been wonderful partners. Many of the pharmacies are now just coming on board. And some of those may be through our specific state allotment, but some of those may also receive vaccine through the federal pharmacy program. So we're starting to see more availability with those. St. Francis will be working this week. And as you may be aware, we've opened up to teachers, pre-K through 12th grade and staff, and getting those vaccinated in St. Francis is working with us and getting those scheduled and the teachers and staff taken care of so our children can get back to school and be protected that way. I wanted to give you just briefly a little bit of data that I have available. And I'm continuing to try to gather that, again, as I move forward in this position. But I wanted to let you know, for Muskogee County, our population age 16 and above is around 53,000, rounded off. Residents vaccinated for that prime dose, which is the first dose, is 6,765. So that's around 12.7%. And then our residents that have completed the series is around 3,085. So that's around 5.8%. Our population age 65 and older is around 11,600. And our residents vaccinated for the prime dose in 65 and above is 4,429. And then that percent is around 38.2%. And then our residents who have completed the series, age 65 and older, are 1,917. And that's around 16.5%. So those are just some numbers that I was able to pull together. And also, please note, if we have any federal partners in relation to our tribal partners, their vaccine is received separate from what comes into the state allotment. So they have been giving vaccinations as well. But we don't have all of that data available, or I don't at this time in relation to how many they've provided in Muskogee County as well. And I know there's been some questions about the possibility of being able to do some large pods again. We did one in January and had a wonderful response. Our partners, our emergency management, our city employees. I mean, we could not have asked for better support. And I was very positive. So our local emergency planner for the Health Department, Eric Reed, Riggs, excuse me, has reached out to Jeff Smith, our emergency manager, to take a look at possibly having routine scheduled pods in Muskogee County each week. And again, that's as we get more vaccine allotments, which we are anticipating that that is going to improve and get better. So partnerships are absolutely critical. In relation to being able to assist our seniors and others... In relation to being able to assist our seniors and others that may have internet challenges, we continually take phone calls at the County Health Department. And we also have maintained what we call pod appointments, or the portal appointments that go into the portal system. But we also have worked hard to maintain some what we call paper appointments. So if we do have someone that calls in, then we try to have some appointments available in which we can get them in that way. Also, if they call 211, then 211 is supposed to take their name and number and they send back to us, our county, a list of those that need to be followed up with and appointments made. So we are working on those processes, but as always, assistance from other agencies or volunteer groups in relation to that would always be greatly appreciated. And we're very open in looking at that as we move forward and trying to make sure that we get vaccine out to everybody in Muskogee County. That's kind of my highlight, and I am more than willing to answer any questions, guidance, whatever I can do to assist. That's what I'm here for.
Thank you, Tina. Does council have any further questions for Tina?
Yes.
Once again, go ahead, doctor.
Tina, Tracy Hous. One of the questions I have is that I work, I'm a local physician, I work with some of the pharmacies that you mentioned. And one of the things that I was asked about is some reassurance on the supply of the vaccines. A lot of these pharmacies prepared for X number of vaccines and were kind of told that they were going to get this number of vaccines, but it's falling short of what they were told. Or they were told they were going to get Pfizer doses and they get Moderna doses. And the reason why I think that we need some reassurance on that is a lot of our seniors who don't know how to use the internet are relying on Ernie's Pharmacy and some of their other local pharmacies and need to be able to call and get the appointment on the vaccine and they're having to possibly turn around and get rescheduled or changed. And I think that one of the things that we're running to with this community is just reassurance that, we need the reassurance that whenever, that we're going to get these doses to our pharmacies and to others that can vaccinate our seniors.
Right, right. And yes, I will say the pharmacies are correct in what they were told they possibly could receive and then what they ended up receiving. And that partially was a result from the state allocation. And again, what we get, we feel sometimes like those pharmacists feel like, because we're told from the feds in relation to what our allotment will be, and that changes all the time. I do believe in my communication with the State Health Department and the Situation Room, that that is getting better and we hope that our allocations will increase. But yes, I do absolutely understand their frustration and I will sure try to do what I can, working with the State Health Department, in trying to make sure that they do get that allocation. Now again, some of those will be receiving federal allocation, which is different. So because there is actually a federal pharmacy program that has occurred and there are some pharmacies in this area that will be receiving that federal allocation directly from the feds and not out of our state allocation. Ernie's, I know, and I'm proud to say, was the first pharmacy in Oklahoma that was approved to receive state allocation. They did an amazing job and I was very honored to say that they are in Muskogee County. And I do know their allocation wasn't what the state had hoped it would be, but I do hope that that changes.
One of the question I have is some of the pharmacies have also asked that they feel they've been restricted to just doing Moderna or Pfizer and some of their customers they take care of are requesting one or the other. Is it, are you guys allowing the pharmacies to order both of the vaccines or are you restricting them to what brand they can order?
Unfortunately, pharmacies have to be able to have what is called cold storage. And that is some of the struggles that we are not able to ship Pfizer, because Pfizer has to be maintained in a specific cold storage freezer unit. Right, currently, right now, our, the Health Department in District Seven is either shipped to St. Francis Hospital or in Sequoia County. So that is part of the problem in relation to Pfizer. The other issue with Pfizer is once it comes out of that cold storage freezer, it has to be in AR within seven days. If not, the vaccine has to be destroyed. So it just right now currently requires more care in relation to that. So that's part of the agreement with the pharmacy, is whether they have a cold storage unit or not. If they don't, then they will, they will have to get Moderna. Sometimes it just has to do also with what vaccine we get within our allotment at the Our hope though is Pfizer has submitted an EUA request change in which hopefully Pfizer will be able to be stored in a different type of freezer, more of a regular type freezer like Moderna is, and not have to be that cold storage. So we're waiting patiently and hopefully that will be approved and added to the EUA and then that will open up our ability to be able to provide those vaccines in any location that has a regular type freezer.
So for pharmacies that are listening, they just need to make sure they verbalize with you guys that they have the capabilities to do the cold storage for the Pfizer vaccine?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that would be very helpful.
Okay, once again, we'd like to thank you, Tina, for joining us and we will follow up on a conversation with you in the next coming days about some of our community partners. At this time, I would like to yield the floor to some of those partners who have stepped forward this morning. This evening, we have some representatives from the NAACP. President Roger Cutler, if you can take the stand and you can also introduce your health chairman.
Deputy Mayor Reed, thank you for this opportunity. City Council, NAACP is glad to be here tonight. I'm glad to have our health chair here to make a presentation to you, Ms. Betty Baca McConnell.
Good evening, Councilman Coleman and council members. I am Betty Baca McConnell. I am the past State Health Chairman of NAACP. The state, I was over the state. So the local branch have nominated me to be the local health chairman. And some of the concerns I had, that you already addressed it, that some elderly people do not have internet. And so you already addressed that issue. And I have asked to come, that they have talked so widely and proudly about is a representative from Ernie's Pharmacy, Nikki. And I did ask Economy Pharmacy to be here tonight. They were given 250 vaccines and they were unable to come. So I would turn it over to Nikki from Ernie's Pharmacy at this time.
Hi, thank you so much for inviting us today. We are proud to be the first pharmacy that, like Ms. Johnson was stating, to be certified in the state of Oklahoma. My dad, Ernie, who's also here, we felt called to really put this as a priority for us. We felt like as pharmacists, this is our time to shine in the healing of this pandemic. We do give vaccines, we are a vaccine partner already in the community and we felt like this is where we could really step up to the plate. And we wanted to invest in Muskogee. They've been good to us and we wanted to give back to our community. We did purchase an ultra cold freezer and we have a Moderna freezer. We wanted to be ready for anything the state wanted to provide to us. So we are ready to go. We have the capability to store thousands of doses, we even have a bigger refrigerator. So we are ready to go. So far, we did start around the first of February and they only gave us 100 doses. And we called, I went to place my second order and they got a phone call and they said, well, we didn't allocate you for any more doses. And I said, well, that is a problem. And they were surprised that we were already out of it. So they were impressed with our burn rate, as they say, in the Health Department of the vaccine. And so they did quickly help us out, they did provide us with 300 more doses and we got 100 more doses this morning. So we are, basically, supply is our limiting factor. We've been doing 20 to 30 doses a day and we are ready to ramp it up. When second doses start the first of March, we will be prepared to do 40 to 60 doses a day. But again, we are kind of watching the supply from the state and as long as they can continue to supply it for us, we're ready to go. Where we see ourselves, we talked about people having problems, we're going to specialize in those people that do not have internet, that don't have an email address. I've been giving vaccines to people in their cars. So we're going to specialize in those that need special needs. So if you get the call, they go to our website and they can make an appointment, but they don't have to go to our website. All of my staff has been trained to make these appointments, so they can simply call the pharmacy or walk into our pharmacy and we'll make that appointment for them. So I hope to kind of specialize where maybe patients are having trouble with the portal, this is where we can step in for those patients. So we are allowed now, on February 22nd, they did open it up to teachers, high-risk individuals, so we are able to give it to those people as well. So anyone that's qualifying based on the Health Department's, you know, category that we're in, we are able to follow suit. So right now, they've just been giving us the Moderna vaccine, but like I said, we are prepared to store the Pfizer. I know it's going to have some dating outside the refrigerator in the Moderna freezer, but to get a lot of it, you're still probably going to need that ultra cold. What I'm hearing is it's only going to be good for like maybe a week or two in the Moderna freezer. So to get a lot of it, I think you're going to want to have that. I'm not selling the freezer just yet. But nonetheless, we'll be able to take on anything they want to get us. We just felt like this was a thing that, part of the pandemic healing that we can do. And we have been getting an incredible response. So for those that are thinking people aren't going to want to take it, I have a different story. Our phone has been ringing off the hook. We serve a minority community and we have, they have just, I mean, everyone has just been coming in and it's been really heartwarming to see the readiness of the community to heal and get on with normal life. So we're just pleased to be a partner with the Health Department. I've been working closely, I think I've had exchanged some emails with Ms. Johnson, if she remembers, but I've been working really closely. I basically pestered them, I think, until they were just like, give that lady in Muskogee some vaccine. I did kind of make some phone calls early on. So we're just pleased to be a partner with the Health Department and if we can help partner with anything, we're willing to do it. There is kind of a workflow issue, these vaccines do have to be reported to the Health Department within 24 hours of giving the vaccine. So that does kind of add an additional, we process it, we are able to bill for the administration fee. Of course, no one gets turned away, there's no cost to the patient. If they don't have insurance, they are not turned away. But we do process it kind of like a prescription, so it's like a double, you know, workflow there to report it to the State Health Department. So, you know, but we're willing to partner, do whatever we need for the Muskogee community. Right now, our limiting factor is the supply and just making sure that they send us what they need. I've been working with Michael Zalinski and he has assured me, he knows first part of March, I'll be doubling what we're doing on a daily basis. He has reassured me that we'll have the doses. So we're kind of, you know, day to day, but we are pleased at the response, we are, our hearts are warm to see the response of the community, the eagerness and readiness to get on. So we're just, we're excited to do it. So any questions I can answer about how to make an appointment or anything? You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Reed, for your attention in this matter and thank you for the continued fight for our seniors and for our community as we continue to support. The NAACP is here. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you Nikki and Mr. Ernie for taking time out to come and join us on tonight. Once again, we'd like to thank Tina and we will work from here. We just wanted to take some time out to give some acknowledgements, some information now to those who may be viewing or may even see this in a future view and to give them some information that there is hope for Muskogee. We will address the issues with our senior citizens complexes as well as, I even had a question about some of the seniors that may be homebound. And so I don't know if this is something that the task force that we have in place can take on, Mr. Manager, Mr. Mayor, but we do have a volunteer group of NAACP as well as the local ministers groups that want to be involved. And so that's what we just wanted to do, is to take some time out to get some information to the community. So that really wraps up what I have at this point.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Reed. Ms. McConnell, you had signed up to speak to this item, but I'm assuming you made your presentation when?
Yes.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, thank you. Any other comments from the council? Again, Deputy Mayor Reed, thank you so much for this very important information on tonight. Item number three.
Consider approval to accept partial payment from O-MAG in the amount of $603,663.36 for damages sustained at the City of Muskogee raw sewage pump station during the 2019 flood event or take other necessary action.
Mr. Evans.
And good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council. If everybody remembers, we had a major flood back in 2019. That's now two presidential disasters ago. One of our buildings that was damaged was a raw sewage pump station at the pollution control plant. If you guys remember, a lot of the pollution control plant did flood out there, we had a lot of damage out there that we're still working through, still repairing. Unfortunately, a lot of that was in a flood zone, so it's not covered by our insurance. However, the raw sewage pump station is covered by our insurance. Some of the conceptual cost estimates have been submitted to our insurance for restoration to return that back to pre-disaster condition. That's estimated to be at about $1.9 million. O-MAG has come in with actual cash value of about $600,000, what they estimated some of the equipment. Now, they're unable to pay for some of this, for engineering, to overhead some of the estimates until we actually get invoices to turn those in. That's estimated to be at another 400 grand or so that insurance will pick up. We do have a $1 million coverage limit per incident and I do believe that we will meet that. We also have some other damages at the water treatment plant. If we should fall short, those can be submitted to get us to our $1 million coverage limit from O-MAG. Staff does recommend approval of the $600,000 payment from O-MAG.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Do we have any questions for the agenda item or a motion to approve?
Motion for approval.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the council? Roll call.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number four.
Consider approval of Resolution Number 2847, amending the agreement establishing the Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group, changing the effective date from a term of 50 years to a term in perpetuity or take other necessary action.
Mr. Tucker.
Mayor, members of the council, O-MAG is the Oklahoma Mutual Assurance Group and serve as our insurer for general liability and for property. and serve as our insurer for general liability and for property. It was created as a consortium of cities and towns under a specific state law under Title 74, which is the Interlocal Cooperative Act. You all may know it because oftentimes, we do things with the county government to create effectively another body, which is a combination of both city and the county. So effectively, what OMAG did back in 1977 was get a group of cities to come together to form a corporation which would effectively be able to allow them to pool their resources for insurance, workers' comp, and some of those kind of things. So the agreement that created OMAG had it set at a 50-year expiration. So the Board of Trustees of OMAG have asked its member cities, of which the City of Muskogee is one of them, to approve a resolution which would change that term of a 50-year, a 50-year term to in perpetuity, which means the agreement would last forever. So we are, this would not bind us to anything else, but we're effectively exercising our vote as a member city to agree to approve this resolution extending the term from 50 years to perpetuity to allow us and other cities like us to be able to utilize the services that are a result of our pooling arrangement. Happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Tucker, I'm correct in assuming there's no comparable agency to OMAG that can service us.
That's correct.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for Mr. Tucker or a motion to approve?
Motion for approval.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second. Any further discussion from the council? Roll call.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. That was the last agenda item for the evening. I don't believe that any other residents have signed up to speak to us on tonight. Therefore, we are adjourned.